All right, call to order. Any additions to the agenda? No?
Have additions, are we?
Oh, yeah, that's what Kale was saying last time. I think you were off the call.
I missed the last half hour.
Kale was noting that technically speaking, under the open meeting law, we're not supposed to be adding stuff without without full warning. So I guess we should probably stop doing the additions.
Note to self, no more lawyers on planning commission.
Brian, you've got forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
It has to be a forty-eight hour period.
All right, so additions to agenda is no longer an agenda item.
Yeah.
All right, so then, thank you.
You can do it within forty-eight hours.
Within forty-eight hours, okay, okay.
It's two days.
Oh kidding aside for the record, we need one of those. Any public comment?
No public, easy.
But I think we can bring up things to discuss, at least we can vote on them.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't do it, all right?
Yeah, you know what? I have a training with the CCRPC in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
And I will make public media or open meetings stuff a big. I'll ask some questions about that because it would be really nice to know. And there don't seem to be any other good opportunities for training like that, so.
So and what about three people meeting outside the meeting?
Great question.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Another one.
Yeah, it certainly is, so. Already my action item section is gonna get filled.
Is that referring to like doing a breakout with a group of some sort to work on the regs or something like that?
Yes, that we should know about that for sure, yeah.
But we're not supposed to, you know, get together outside the official meeting and start.
Right. Plotting.
Scheming.
I think plotting and scheming are both generally bad words. No plotting and no scheming, note to self. Previous meeting minutes?
Yes, previous meeting minutes. We have all those available here. We just need your signature, Brian, on those three. And that's from.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Since I was off for the last thirty minutes of February. It wasn't the twelfth, what was the day?
The second.
The second, so that's a typo. February the second. Do we have a, you know, we still have a quorum though, so.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right. Did anyone have any comments?
Or just a question? Maybe I missed it, but those been sent out for review, the minutes?
I posted them online. I didn't send them out specifically. Yeah, yeah.
But we don't have to vote to approve them tonight, Tim, if you want to take a gander.
Yeah.
No, that's right, just in general, I just want to be able to read them.
Nick started doing them just online.
They're posted online. Our, I'm hoping to hoping to clean things up on our website a little bit when we have a new website and hopefully in a way that that generates an email to you guys and whatnot, but I'm a little bit swamped right now with with notifications and stuff like that, so I apologize for not sending those out directly, but but they are available on the website, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
On the town website.
On the town website, yeah, yeah. And our new one, I've been assured, is almost done.
Have you had a chance to, you haven't had a chance to see them then either, right, David? Do you, do we want to push these off until next meeting and just approve them all? I don't want to rush in. Yeah, Sandy's giving me the shaking her head.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to look at them, sorry.
So it's unanimous that we should approve these next meeting?
I feel bad, yeah, yeah.
You're in good company, I would say.
So just go to the, you're not gonna email them to us?
I can, I can email them, I can email them, yeah. No, that's, that's, that's probably a system we're thinking.
That's a simple.
So maybe add them to the agenda email.
Yeah, I can do that.
There's that one on the table.
Sounds good, appreciate that. I'll start, I'll start with that feedback, thank you.
The majority has spoken.
Majority has spoken, indeed. Also, while we're at it, what's Boris's last name? Because I left that blank hoping to write it down.
Seagraves. S.E.A.G.R.A.V.E.S. So we should invite him to the next meeting, right?
So I traded an email with him where he asked me, yes, he asked me the procedure. I said, if you're, if you're interested, which would be great, just do like a cover in a cover email and then just attach like a resume of some sort, doesn't need to be like the world's greatest resume. And just forwarded to me and then we would just invite you to please come to the next planning commission meeting. And that's, if you wanted to check in with them, that'd be awesome.
Oh, yeah, well.
So that's where it was left. That was on Monday, I think, so.
We don't actually have an opening yet, though, right?
I'm almost, we don't yet, but.
No, we do, because there's only eight of us.
No, there's nine, we figured it out.
Oh, wait.
But Val sold her house, I think, did she not? Thought she did, someone told me she did. That's a horrible source, because I don't even remember who it was.
No one's come to ask if they can build an ADU yet, so I don't consider it sold.
Is that an informal rule?
It is the every single house that gets sold in this town seems.
Yeah, exactly.
The new owners get all excited and call me and ask if they can put in an ADU.
Is that right?
Or subdivide it.
Where they put one in and they don't actually have approval.
It's the other one, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. We moved in nine months ago and we've been building this apartment, we just learned that you guys have zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a joke. I'm glad that people are are building ADUs, I really am, I really am. And I'd like to talk about that in our local option tax thing as well, but. So anyway, the point is, Val sold her house and seems.
Well, I don't want to start. That's what I was told, and then I Googled real turn, it wasn't listed anymore, so I'm assuming that's accurate. But aside from that, I think we know there's two commission members who might welcome the opportunity to resign. So I think we just keep going forward, because we know Val's moving for a fact, so.
Val being the other one?
And we, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Boris and the typical would arrive here and we will have an interview with him, a few questions.
That's what I told him in email.
Yeah, and then we would go into a executive session and say, yes, we want him or whatever.
Yep, yep.
And then we repeat that with the select board, right?
We're not involved, we.
Yeah, we just send the.
We just send the select board recommending. Okay. And if they want to interview him, they will.
They do, but it's like two questions.
He asks you, what's your favorite, are you Red Sox?
Right, oh, right, of course, we do Bob's.
That's the question you get.
Interrogation, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That is the standard interrogation.
I'll tell Boris Red Sox.
So then we do one at a time, basically, do you think?
I think so, because I think we'd want a sense of where like we should ask Lee, I know Lee's been expressing a desire to resign for like a year, so.
Lee has been?
Lee has been, yeah. So I'm thinking she might welcome that opportunity, but we need to confirm that with her first. Kale's been more engaged recently, so I'm not sure if he still wants to resign if opportunity presents itself or not, so.
Yeah, I know kids' sports were a big thing for him, so then that can be very time consuming, so. Yeah.
So there's a lot of moving pieces, I guess, but I'm suspecting there's multiple openings if, if there were multiple candidates, so. Can you give, oh wait, was I gonna give a local option tax? I think the local option tax update is this. So because this requires a, please jump in there, because this requires an amendment to the town charter, unfortunately, it's a big production. So the question really, I think, Nick and I traded emails on this when we were debating whether to put it on the, or Nick was asking if I thought it should go on the agenda, is is this something we wanted to bring to the select board and say, hey, we think you should do this? Or, and I think there's probably mixed views on this in the planning commission, I don't one hundred percent know, know my view, but it's is this a bigger issue? Like if we're going to have to go to the select board anyway about a local option tax update charter change, is there a bigger question for the select board, like, hey, select board, what do you want to do about short-term rentals? By the way, part of that question would be, do you want to do a local option tax on housing? Because the point being, like, if we're going to the select board anyway, is there anything that we as a planning, I'm not saying we do, but as a planning commission, do we want to talk about, do we think this is a bigger topic that we need to address? Or do we just think we want to go to the select board with?
Not only is it a select board concern, it's our concern to make that sort of an decision, whether we go into that kind of a discussion and then.
No, no, I agree, that's what I was poorly said, David. The question is, do we as a group think that's a discussion we want to have? Or do we as a group think we just want to go to the select board with the local option tax? Or do we as a group think we don't want to do any of those things?
Only the option tax to the select board, that's the only thing we would go to them for.
Yeah. You don't want to, like, when I think about it, if there's, say, twenty rentals in town right now, maybe, and they each would generate thirty thousand dollars, so that's six hundred thousand dollars, so that's six thousand dollars. Seventy percent of six thousand is.
Right, forty-two hundred bucks.
Yeah, so I mean, is it really worth it, but I mean, if they're gonna say it's not worth it, then, but we don't know what they would say.
We don't know. If I may back up a little bit, here's kind of where I, so just to remind everyone.
I don't know if I properly phrased.
Well, no, I think, no, I think you, I think you got it right, but I'll add a little context. And me getting the minutes out prior to this would have probably helped, but that's on me. So the, what I found out is, so I looked into it a little, you know, after, last time we talked about this, last meeting, I came before you guys and said, so I looked into it, the local option tax requires a charter change. And, you know, based on the little that I know about short-term rentals here in Underhill, it doesn't seem, it seems like it's questionable whether it would be worth it to pursue that, given that it's gonna take like so long to prepare ourselves even to have a local option tax possibility, et cetera, et cetera. And so, but in the last couple of weeks, I started, I thought, okay, well, that's true, but I still would like to know more about this, because we're based this off the assumption that that short-term rentals wouldn't generate a lot of money, as Roy pointed out, with his sort of back of the envelope math. And I agree with your analysis on that. I think that's, I think you're probably on to, like, the amount that you kind of drew up, like maybe six to ten, twelve thousand a year, or something like that, would probably be about all that that would generate. But, you know, before we talked about it again, I was hoping to get some more information, so I started Googling. And I started looking at Airbnb and Verbo and stuff like that. And turns out Mandy has already been, and the Esetzer's office has already been tracking this, so she gave me her information about it. And I sort of put it together, a list, like a spreadsheet of all the short-term rentals that I could find in the Underhill area. And I've found out that there's about thirty to thirty-five, depending on which day you're looking. And they range in price, right now, the average, I've been adding them slowly, I haven't gotten nearly comprehensive with it, but the average that I'm seeing is about a hundred and fifty-two dollars per night. Not all of them are rented necessarily by the night, there's at least one that's rented by the month. And that's, that's on a different listing service that is catering towards traveling workers, specifically traveling healthcare workers like nurses. But I can only find one of those in Underhill, so that's kind of an outlier. Regardless, there are a bunch of short-term rentals in Underhill, probably about two to three dozen. They're scattered pretty evenly throughout the town. Average, like I said, is about a hundred and fifty-two dollars a night for the, you know, like, the cost. I'm not sure what the revenue, I'm not sure what the actual revenue is to the person, the host.
It's pretty much all of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, we had one.
You did, okay, yeah.
I think they take a small.
Yeah, Airbnb takes, I think that fee that I'm quoting also includes the, like, the built-in state tax, state rooms and meals tax as well, so.
There's also a cleaning fee that can really drive up the room rate.
The cleaning fees don't, aren't, are not calculated in the price that I'm.
Oh, really?
That I am, yeah, those are applied afterwards, so they're not, they're not an upfront cost.
That's cheaper than I would have thought for a short-term rental.
We're also looking at the off-season, sort of, and during a bad ski season, so this may, there's, you know, this data is about as close as I can get to like granular data, but it's far from, you know, far from universal.
Well, the tax is not on the, doesn't include the cleaning fees.
Right, doesn't include the cleaning fee, so it is more expensive than it sounds. And, you know, that's part of the Airbnb, you know, marketing strategy, is you get a lower upfront cost and then some of the costs are backloaded. But, you know, regardless, I'm actually less interested in the, in the local option tax, the money and everything like that. What kind of got me thinking, as I started doing this research, was I realized, I started thinking, okay, so we don't have that many Airbnbs, maybe they're not even raising that much money. So maybe a local option tax isn't a super effective policy at doing whatever it is we hoped it to do, like raise money or encourage people to, you know, use, like, do long-term rental or whatever. But I did realize, I did sort of to think that AD, that short-term rentals, Airbnb and whatnot, are probably, I think a large, I'm starting to suspect that a large percentage of what would otherwise be rental property in Underhill is in fact being rented through short-term rental services right now.
Yeah, pretty much, that's true.
Yeah, like, and.
You think it'd be one for one, that's close.
Yeah, and that can, that percentage concerns me, because, you know, that, because every one of those that's, that is a short-term, yeah, a short-term rental is by definition not a long-term rental. And we have a huge problem with the availability of rental housing in Vermont, particularly in our more rural and spread-out areas, outside of Chittenden County. Or even within Chittenden County, I mean, but especially outside. So it got me thinking that that is maybe something that the planning commission might want to investigate a little bit more, because, you know, this, I'm, based on what I'm seeing, I really, I truly believe that the short-term rentals proliferation are eating into the availability of rental housing in Underhill. I think that that is a problem. It means that there's, for a variety of reasons, I won't do a whole rant on it, but like, there's a, there's a variety of reasons why I think that that is worth the attention of the town government. And I also, you know, to give you an example, the, I think it's number five Park Street, it's like, I think a four or five bedroom or five-unit rental, I actually certified that there's a new hot water tank in the basement there in order to help the owner get a state grant, helping him pay for the hot water heater, which I was happy to do. But I come to find out that two of those are right now in short, in Airbnb. So we definitely have, you know, and which is people's right to do. So here's kind of where I'm, where I'm going with this. I think that the local option tax thing is probably not worth bringing to the select board right now, and here's why. I think that we should study this up more, the short-term, the short-term rental thing, by which I mean this. We should study short-term rentals in Underhill more, try to get more data, and then revisit the idea of a local option tax as part of several other bylaw reforms that apply to short-term rentals.
So, thank you, maybe, well, I was gonna say, maybe, this is the kind of thing, because I'm sure everyone has a view.
Yeah.
Where, thank you so much, Nick. I'm wondering, it is obviously a hot topic in Vermont, it's like in VT Digger every other week. So I, I think maybe we go around the room and just get people's thoughts on addressing this. If it's something you're interested in talking about, something you're interested in digging in on. Does that, maybe start with Sandy, since she's on the video monitor. How do you feel about what Nick said, Sandy? Taking the time to do that, given whether, how you feel about it, or other priorities, or, yeah, anyway.
Here, here's what my heart is saying. I think, I agree with Nick that we should wait. I think we, we should look at what other towns are doing as far as all of the short-term rentals. Are there any solutions or ways that we can address this, other than this sort of meaningless tax that we're, we would be offering? And are there any incentives that we could think of that could help people not do short-term rentals, but instead do longer leases? You know, the, the local option taxes, I don't think it's really gonna solve too many problems, and it doesn't sound like it's gonna generate a lot of income right now. It's, it's just part of the bigger picture, and we're trying to take one grape off the hanging fruit there, but, yeah, that's my feeling.
Tim? Yeah, I think, I think postponing it would be, would be a good idea, I guess, just how to get to the root of what the, what the issue is, is probably, you know, people are probably making a fair amount more money doing the rentals with the short-term, so how do you, how do you stop that, this kind of supply and demand and probably making twice or three times what you make with just a standard rental?
Yeah.
So without, without, without making regulations so that you can't do it, it seems like you have a hard time controlling it, incentivizing it.
Yeah.
If the main goal of a rental property is to make money, you're gonna want to maximize your return on it?
Yeah, definitely, definitely, yeah, so.
David?
Yeah. It's really difficult to try and go against what the market is saying. The value of living in Underhill is at a certain level. It's, it's just a very desirable place for people to live in, and that's why the land and housing prices are high, and Underhill higher than a lot of other towns. It's a really difficult, difficult to try to get through this kind of a thing, to try to work out affordable housing in Underhill, I'm just, I'm just really pessimistic about something that's going to be able to be done without any, without having some really complicated contracts with land artificially held at a lower level, and select boards signing on, it's just complicated and anti-market and so on, and difficult. So I'm just pessimistic about it all, and we keep talking about it, and maybe some ideas will come up, you know, with other towns doing something. I'm willing to go on that way.
Okay, look.
Sandy's thought about it a lot more than I have. And I didn't even think about it until you mentioned that every house in your neighborhood that was being sold was going to short-term rental for smug. And then I started looking around and noticing that's happening all over Vermont. So, and that is a problem, when you need workers and you need affordable housing, and
Yeah.
all of this is being snapped up, but everybody's had good points, and I think we should look at it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
I think it's hard to contemplate restricting a homeowner's right to rent a house, rent their apartment any way they'd like. And I think that it's just another thing that, you know, Nick's gonna have to enforce, or somebody's gonna have to enforce. And I think it just takes away a lot of your, the personal freedom, and I kind of get the sense that this this affordable housing issue is something that we're not gonna solve. It should be, it should be coming from Montpelier, they should be having some, some type of serious serious, you know, laws, changing the law to make it happen, and I don't think it's anything we're gonna solve. And I'll think, and think if you tell people, they have, I could think of a few people who have short-term rentals, if you said, you gotta rent it, you have to lease your apartment, they're not gonna even lease it, they're just gonna leave it empty. I mean, that's what I would have done with the one we had, because we, we just didn't want, you know, we wanted to regulate how many, you know, we didn't want somebody there three hundred sixty-five days a year, we just wanted somebody there a hundred days or two hundred, or a hundred and fifty, and that was plenty, you know, in somebody in our space, so. I think it's a difficult thing to try to change, or, you know, to regulate, actually, because you're gonna have to be the guy who says, you know, you know more Airbnb's at your apartment, how do I enforce?
Yeah, I have a couple of ideas about how, where I was kind of going with, like, policy suggestions, but I want to, I think Sandy has something else to say.
Sandy?
Yeah, unless you wanted to give your feedback first, Brian, but.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'll go after you.
Last spring, I, I attended a statewide housing conference. And one of the things I found really interesting was how many businesses were investing in rentals for their employees. And it makes me wonder if there's a way we can collaborate with, with some local businesses, maybe they, they aren't Underhill businesses, but try to figure out a way to make more rentals by collaboration with some other organizations that have a need for long-term rentals. The other thing I was gonna mention was, before this, this call, I was listening to some hearings that the, at the State House tonight on housing, and so many of the people were saying, you have to, well, quite a few were talking about senior housing and the fact that if you were to provide housing for seniors that own homes in Underhill, then that would free up housing for younger families that would be moving in. So advocating for more senior housing in some way would, would help, help us in, in a lot of ways. The other thing that they were advocating for is fully funding the Housing and Conservation Board, which ultimately pays so many different grants that help with, with funding solutions that we could look into as well. So that's, that's.
My view is a lot of what Roy said, actually. I think it's an issue I'm personally interested in, I like enjoy reading about it and learning about it. I think ultimately, it's something the state's gonna have to just deal with, because it's an unpopular issue, and they're just like punting on it and pushing it down to local towns, because it's the easy way out. And I think the state has to do it. My view is, unfortunately, I think, because like Woodstock's trying to do these housing incentives, and like, for me, the only way to actually effectively address this particular issue is to tell people, I'm not saying we should do this, I'm saying, well, you can't use that as an Airbnb, that has to be a long-term rental. Because I don't see any, like, middle ground, you'd have to say, yeah, it's your property, do what you want, or no, you can't do that, which is what Burlington did. It's incredibly unpopular, and I think it's one of those decisions where everyone hopes there's a fuzzy middle, where you can make everyone happy, and I don't think there is. You either, the state here has to do something, or you have to be willing to make a very unpopular decision if it's, if it's, and say, no, you can't, you can't use these as short-term rentals.
Does the town have any language to address that in certain zoning districts? Because it seems like in a residential, single-family zoning district, it should be, it shouldn't even be technically legal to have a rental commercial property, you could have, it's typically like a accessory dwelling unit, like an unbranded, you could have, you could have it if it's like your close family member, or.
Right, yeah.
Somebody like that, but you can't rent it commercially to them.
We sort of do. ADUs have to be, you know, they do have to be owner-occupied properties or a family member, and then you can extend that up to a year. And otherwise, it's considered a rental property, but we don't really treat rental properties any different than our single-family homes, so it's kind of a meaningless statute. And frankly, I'm not even, or by law, I'm not even sure if it's in line with state statute. If I can respond to some of this.
Yeah.
Here are my, so here are my thoughts. So I think first of all, I don't disagree with anything I've heard necessarily, I think you guys are very much correct that the solution to Vermont's affordability crisis is not going to come from Underhill's planning commission. That being said, it's not gonna come entirely from Montpelier either, and I will point out that there have been rumors in this housing bill discussion, this one happening tonight, about stripping towns that have failed to hit, to control costs or build enough housing of their local zoning laws.
Interesting.
Yeah, now, I would love that in a certain sense, because it would make a lot of my job a lot easier. But I don't think that everyone here in Underhill would love that, and I think that would, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, rebel again.
Yeah, right, and so, I don't, and I don't think anyone has any interest in being caught up in something like that.
You mean there would be a statewide zoning?
There would be preemption. I mean, if you've been following what's happening in California, a number of cities that refuse to like eliminate single-family-only zoning have just lost their ability to do so, because the state has fully preempted that. And now, there's a lot of housing getting built in California, and a lot of it is getting, probably gonna get built in places that might not be the best place for it actually, but there's an argument that a more nuanced zoning code prior to now might have allowed for a placement of necessary housing without, like, with more, with an adequate amount of community input. That's obviously what we're seeking to balance, but I will say, I mean, and I'm not using this as a cudgel or anything, but I'm just saying, like, I've been following this closely, I've been following the work of the Vermont Planners Association, who are doing an excellent job in analyzing these discussions and bills, and this seems to be a real possibility on the horizon, so.
Have they said, like, have they, not to interrupt it, just to pick up on that, have they, have they said, like, seems, so for me, I mostly just like listen to podcasts and all that other stuff, you're much more involved. Have they come out with, like, this is what frustrates me?
Have they come out with like, this is what frustrates me, frustrates me about like Vermont with wastewater. So the Vermont planners come out and said like, I know it looks like there's this binary solution. Like, either leave it unregulated or do what Burlington did.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's not.
There's these, here's these four other ideas towns that you could talk about. Like, is there, are they giving ideas or solutions?
One idea is less about short-term rentals and more about um a more about uh directing, like reserving ADUs for long-term rental renters. Actually, the Seven Days just published an article about it, but it's been in the works for a while. There is an initiative to help to offer incentives for people who are willing to build or convert um part of their houses until to get to building an ADU. And then they receive an incentive if they sign a lease with and then execute that lease with someone for a long, for a period of time. I think it's like two years or something like that.
From the town.
From the city, from the state.
Oh, from the state.
From the state. So that's one, you know, state-funded solution. Here's sort of, this is what, you know, I think you're totally right that there is a lot of room for and demand for. And ideally, this, it should come from some kind of middle ground between the state and local. So here's kinda what I what I would suggest. I think that gives us an opportunity to get a little bit creative. I would suggest something like this, a townwide registry of ADUs or rental housing. You have an ADU or you're renting your house, you join on the registry if you and then.
And it's mandatory.
And it's mandatory. And it's mandatory. You get a notice of violation from me if you if you are found to be renting your house without living in it. Or if you are.
Without being in the register.
Without being on the registry, yep. And um and the penalty is you gotta join the registry. I think that that registry should be, um there should be a, there should be like, let's say, a hundred dollars every year. That's what you pay to stay on the registry. If you are, and you get some of that or all of that waived, if you have a lease that you can furnish that shows that you are renting to a long-term renter here in Underhill. Um otherwise, if you want any short-term rental rentals, you're welcome to do so. You just have to pay a hundred dollars to stay on the rental registry every year, and that's what you can do. We could use that money, which would not be an awful lot.
It'd be like three grand.
Yeah, but we could, or so we could double it, or we could uh or we could off, we could combine it with a local option tax.
It would be the same amount as a local option.
No, it's completely in my head. But this is what you guys pay me to do, is to, is to implement these things. Yeah, totally. This could all be wildly illegal, you know, I don't know. My point is, though, no one's trying this. No one in Vermont is trying stuff like this, but we're going to have to. And and I I know, I'm definitely not the only planner.
I see what you're saying, like you're brainstorming. So I mean, I feel like everyone was on board with that idea. Maybe we set aside a half hour of a meeting to brainstorm ideas. And maybe, maybe, maybe someone hates the registry idea, maybe they'll come up with a new idea. But I see what you're saying, you're trying to come up with a new.
Another one would be um another one would might be, you know, we have use categories, like single, multi-family home, you know, retail space. What if we had a short-term rental use category with specific rules and a zoning and like a fee that you had to to um to to pay in order to do that, the same way you would for a home business or for something else? We could do that. We could use those permit fees, let's say we had that in addition to or instead of a registry. We could use those permit fees in the same way I just suggested. Indeed, we could use all of these fees we're getting from this if we were to do something like that to then subsidize um people who are offering their apartments to um year-round renters. Uh as a way of incentivizing them to do it. So it's just a little bit of market shaping, not like command and control sort of stuff, but.
I wonder what the limits are as far as being able to um um write fees for this and that and so.
That's a lawyer question for sure.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know.
When does this turn into a tax, you know?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question, yeah. I don't, I don't know the answer.
Impact fees.
Could be an impact fee.
Yeah, there you go, an impact fee. We used to have impact fees.
Not in Underhill. No, no, no. I fought against that right from the beginning. But it's supposed to have a rationale of increasing school costs, road costs and so on. But it's never really been a nice equal equation or law, it's just been a.
And equity is, and equity is a big deal because a lot of the people, let's face it, a lot of people doing short-term rentals are doing so that so that simply they can afford their their primary house. And we definitely don't want to be excited.
That's the, that's the argument by the short-term rental industry, that may or may not be true.
So, so, okay, so here's, here's, you know, and we don't have to linger on this for too long because, but here's what I wanted to suggest is, so I came, I I put this on the agenda because I wanted to introduce this and say, hey, I think, you know, this is a really interesting topic. I don't think I'm ready to bring the 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 local option tax to the select board based on this other stuff. But I'd like a few weeks to maybe finish my list of my my database of short-term rentals that I can find, gather some more information and maybe expand that. If I if I had long enough, I could expand that to a full list of ADUs and rental properties in Underhill. And then I could bring back and say, here's exactly how many rental, potentially rental properties are in um are in uh short-term rental. Here's how many um are in long-term rental that we know of. And maybe that would give us some more information to go off of.
The answer to the question about fees, it doesn't have to be to a lawyer. I'm sure the Regional Planning Commission would have some ideas.
Yes, I could reach out to them.
Also the Vermont Legal League. And also the Secretary of State, all three of those would have answered for that.
So Kale emailed me when, we're gonna take advantage of Kale not being here. So Kale emailed me when he said he couldn't make it and said, cuz you remember, obviously, everyone remembers we were talking about maybe giving up bylaws sections into working groups or whatnot, or zoning into working groups. Kale said, volunteer me for whatever you want when you break those up. I think we can instead of volunteer Kale to maybe be a resource for you on this.
Yeah.
What do you think?
An in-house consultant.
Yeah. So Kale, you're volunteer. That is your penalty for not attending.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll ask Kale. I'll ask Kale about that for sure. And like I said, you know, I I think that this is a topic that's really interesting and wor- and is worth discussion. And I have no, I have no, um, I don't think that this is something that we need to rush necessarily. Like I said, we're not gonna solve the housing crisis ourselves, we're not gonna do it. And even if we could, we, you know, we'd still wanna take some time to think about how to do it. So there's no rush on it and I, but I will keep, I will keep looking into this and get, try to get more data that is, that could be useful so that we could make a better decision about what we want to or do not wanna do. And in the meantime, I would love it if you folks could send me any requests for stuff that you'd like me to, you know, to to research or whatever related to this topic. And I'll try to to put together some information for some point in the near future when we can revisit it. If that's okay by everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I think there's, maybe they could come up with something creative here.
And this is the stuff the planning, this is supposed to make what, this is the kinda stuff that's supposed to make being on the planning commission interesting, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, who knows, maybe the, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so.
I mean, that's gonna, this takes us to what I hope is the conclusion of our proposal. So that we never see these four letters on our agenda again.
Yeah.
Can you give the group, if you don't mind? I know you just have been talking for a bit, but what was the summary of your conversation with Jennifer?
My co- summary of my conversation with Jennifer was, you know, um was that basically she would like to see the ARPA committee get through their first round of making ranking or making recommendations it's uh before people start weighing in. She's, you know, she acknowledges nothing that she can do to stop us from sending, or you guys start sending a letter to the ARPA committee saying, here are the ones we really, we really do so. This is not me telling you guys what to do.
Yeah, yeah.
But like, um, but she, I think she was just, I think she was noticing that we've been spending a lot of time on it and was wondering about that um and and was thinking maybe they should, but I think was suggesting politely that we wait until ARPA has done, has 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 sort of sorted through things uh before we sort of weigh in on 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 that. Um, they're gonna be ranking these, uh, I guess their ranking system has emerged. And now, and it's going to be that they're gonna say like, it it's highly desirable, somewhat desirable, or not applicable. Those are their three categories. So I don't know what that mean, how, what you guys think about that. But basically, I mean, it sounds like there's, it sounds like round one is going to be kind of just there, it's 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 probably gonna be a little bit before they they come out with those those rankings, probably like April or maybe even May when we, when they finally have their results from the, from round one. And then it's unclear what happens after that, too.
And Sandy's have been, well, they're from the planning commission, but the two that Sandy was generous enough to put together, those are in.
Yeah, those are in. And I think that, and Jen made it clear that she doesn't wanna see, the ARPA committee doesn't wanna see anymore. I mean, I know she said that it would be okay if we got a few in after the deadline. Technically, we did that with Sandy's, I guess, or maybe you got them in before the deadline, Sandy, I can't, I can't remember, but.
Not like.
Yeah, so she doesn't wanna see anymore at the moment. But, you know, um, I guess, uh, perhaps after, if there are any, maybe if there are any glaring omissions or, you know, anything really objectionable after the first round has been done, maybe the, maybe the commission would feel moved to to suggest that, I don't know. So that that's basically, it's just that the ARPA committee is is continuing to do their thing. And it's, it's, it's probably gonna be a while before we, before we hear what their official rankings are for all of these proposals.
So they don't want input from us before that time, or they do want input from us?
I think that they would, I think they can live without it, but they, I think, there's nothing stopping us from giving it to them. But I I I think it's, I don't, I don't get the sense from Jen that it would, that it's really gonna sway their decision-making one way or another, cuz they'd like to do their own, their own process.
Well, then when they come up with their list and so on, we can stamp it and say, this is okay according to the town plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Or this is not okay according to the town plan, very unlikely.
Agreed. So, John.
I still hold by the view, that very much sums up my whole vibe from the ARPA committee, as I tried to mention last time remotely. But I feel like she's being very polite. I think the summary is they don't wanna sputtering in on what they're doing. I will say, the only place I would disagree with that is if there's any one, if there's any, like, if there's one, two, three of these, we think like, oh, my God, if we don't get that, it's really gonna hamper what we wanna do in the next year or two. I think it would be worth, despite what they said, sending an email about that. Like, for me, the natural resources inventory probably hits on that list cuz without that, we can't get to the zoning, right? Like, I don't know if anyone else has one, or if people disagree with the natural resources inventory. I'm not saying that is, from my point, my bigger point is, I think if there's one, two, three, not that many, where we're like, yeah, we hear what you said, but it'd be great if these three were on the highly desirable list. I think that's what I'm saying. And and just tiptoeing on their toes.
And along with that would be.
Dancing on their toes.
Uh Sandy, one second, Bart. Along with that would be the upgrading of the zoning map.
Yeah. Agreed, cuz that's, yeah, that's just a prerequisite to get to that.
We gotta digitize the zoning map, it's true. We should have a PDF version of it.
What's the, what's the, what's the thing we need to do that?
I've got some ideas about that. I've been thinking about this for a while.
Yeah.
And this is something I really will wanna get actively involved.
But is this, is this, oh, totally. I I guess my threshold is just, is this something we need to be asking? I know they told us not to submit more, but do we need to put a money request in for this to Bart's point or?
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
We can do this with our regular budget, honestly. And we should, I mean.
It'll take some time.
Well, yeah, we should take some time, we shouldn't rush it. And it's also, it's something that my office should be doing anyway. And 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 that's, that's what we're budgeted for. So, you know, doing this sort of stuff. So it's definitely worth, I appreciate the um the the interest in it because it's a good reminder to get those tax maps and the zoning maps back up on the wall and get better digital versions of them. It needs to happen, for sure. And I may ask you guys to to help me out with that and maybe we, you know, but I think at the moment, uh, it's probably something we can, I'd get, either get a different ma- uh grant for or we can go through our regular budgeting process. Cuz that's pretty standard town business, like keep an accurate zoning map around and stuff like, updated when necessary.
Well, we can sit down at some point and just sort of lay out a um um plan, how to tackle this whole issue, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I've got some ideas about that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to talk to you about that because I know that there's been some interest in, and I don't come into like, like the party here because you guys did a lot of work on this before I was hired, but I know that there's been interest in aligning zoning uh districts with lot lines and stuff like that. And it seems like an opportune time to maybe, you know, to 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 do that reform as well as maybe, you know, update the map to a better digital version or something like that. But um, you know, in the meantime, for anyone listening, uh, the zoning map is available, it's just not on the wall. Um but it is available and it is accurate and 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 it's here. So um, but if anyone wants the quick version, the GIS version online is is um is easier to access. It's just not down to the, down to the square foot accurate.
Word accurate in quotes with an asterisk to a small.
Yeah, yeah. The the, the online zoning map is very useful. It's, it's very useful, yeah.
You've got all the individual properties that are um digitized. And you have the hand-drawn lines basically for the digit, for the district.
Yeah.
And the uh property lines are based on uh the uh deeds. And the seeds are sometimes based on things like, um, as on Corbett Road, to the old um birch stump.
Yep, old trees, exactly.
So there's a lot of fudging on those uh lines. So even though it looks very, very accurate, you know.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it fits, basically, because uh when the guys were doing it, they just said, okay, this is a fairly accurate one. These aren't accurate, but but, you know, okay.
Everything around it is, that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, we'll fit it.
Yeah.
We'll fudge it all together, basically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
So that's, that's, that's our accurate map.
Yes, yes. Now it is the one we take to court.
All right, so Sandy, yep, we got zoning map, Sandy?
No, I'm not going to there. I wanna go back to ARPA.
Yeah, okay.
Phase two, or once they raided them, it will go to the select board?
I don't know. I really, I really don't know.
I would think that they're gonna take to the select board a final, not like I know either, but I can't imagine they're gonna take highly just the whole category of highly desirable to the select board. I'm assuming they're gonna publicize that. And I mean, I would think they're gonna take to the select board a very specific list of like, fund these six things in these amounts.
Nothing else, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I don't really know.
Is because the uh, the inventory is, the timing is really important in knowing whether or not it's gonna get funded. The uh, the person that, or the group that's doing it, Arrowwood, is finishing up one part and and the price of doing the fieldwork this summer will be less if we don't have to pay them to finish one and then do another separate thing. And it's just, would delay things a lot. So like, spring is coming and we don't know whether there's funding or not, and they have to make a plan. So I I don't know if there's, yeah, having, knowing when things are gonna happen, I think is is gonna be really important.
Let's see, when I talk about that uh at some point, because my, again, my, my office might have budget for that and I would have to, well, you and I and Jen should talk because um if there's money available in my budget for that, for mapping specifically, we should just spend that. Because I've got no plans to spend on anything else. So I don't, I just don't know what the status of that is. So let's, Sandy, why don't you and I and Jen uh get talking about that, see if we can get you an answer?
Thank you. I got a, I got a question about the funding. Didn't they already approve funding to do the improvements to the town pond was, weren't?
Yeah, I thought about that, too.
The ARPA funds were used to do that. So could we just propose to them that we'd like funding to do the natural resource inventory? Because it needs to be, it needs to happen quicker.
Is it, is that how it works? Sorry, would, do you know, like, to pick up on Roy's, like, did the select board say, we're gonna spend this amount of ARPA money? And then there's the balance and that's going to the ARPA committee to decide?
So that's, that was my impression, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna say, yes, that's exactly what happened because I don't know if that is exactly what happened. But that's what I, that was my understanding of it from what I, from what I heard when I, but that's also an understanding that I picked up like shortly after I started. So um I was learning a lot and I might have gotten some things wrong.
But they've also funded the website.
Yeah.
So they've already given.
They have, that's true, we have, you know. Now, that being said, like, when I talked to the select board a few months ago about the uh application to uh the RPC for the sidewalk um study, I made the same request, saying, look, you know, we got a deadline coming up, gotta have money set aside for it. Can you guys, can I make, I know this is unusual, but can you make an exception here and just, this is not a huge amount, just allocate that money straight out of the ARPA funds and set that aside? And they said, well, we'd rather not, you know, get, jump in. and set that aside, and they said, uh, well, we'd rather not, you know, get, jump in, uh, jump the queue, because the ARPA prop, committee is doing their own thing, but we'd be, we're still putting together the budget, this is when they're still putting together the budget for, you know, for next fiscal year. They said, we could just allocate money for that right now, put it in our draft budget.
So they went around it.
And they just skipped the ARPA thing entirely and just said, we'll just fund, we'll just fund the recreation commi- committee's budget, uh, to the level that you need, and you guys, and you just ask them to pay for it, which is what is happening, so the rec committee has a much larger budget this year with the, with the, for next, for FY24, with the assumption that they're gonna be paying for a study, you know, maybe up to like sixteen thousand, say, and if not, then they have sixteen thousand dollars that they can roll into the next year or spend on something else, so.
I think we'd really be dancing in the ARPA committee's feet by asking for ARPA money outside of there.
Yeah, and I could just say that, you know, one of the, I, I went to the select board and asked for that extra money, and that's when they sort of said, okay, no more ARPA requests, this is getting out of hand, we're just kind of piddling it away, and they formed the ARPA committee, so they already said, no, our requests for it.
So specifically the natural resources inventory, yeah, that'd be amazing if you could follow up, and if, we'd see if we have a, if the money's available with Jen from some non-ARPA source, then we could decide our next step.
Yeah, I'll look into that, um, yeah. Yeah, cause we have a planning and zoning, um, mapping budget, and that, what has, that's what has been spent on natural res-, it's been increased for and then spent on natural resource inventory in the last couple of years, and, um, if that's carried forward, or if there's money left in that budget, let's spend it on this thing.
So is there anything on this list, or whether, I mean, yes, on the list, cause they're not taking new proposals, that anyone on the planning commission feels is so important that we should send an email and say, hey, we really think this should go on the highly desirable list? Or are we all comfortable just saying, let's see where the ARPA committee lands in the highly, highly desirable list, and then we'll weigh in per what David said?
I'll pull up the list.
But if it doesn't stick out in your mind, there's probably, I can't think of anything, personally.
What, that?
That's on this list, where you're like, it's worth stepping on the ARPA committee's toes.
I think he would probably agree with what we come up with, actually.
I would think so, too.
I mean.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay. Sandy, I can't see you, cause of that, is there anything you think where, are we all comfortable? It sounds like everyone's comfortable waiting until the highly desirable list comes up, okay, cool.
Yep, nothing, nothing on here, okay.
Well, that takes us to my question, which was, now that, and this is from last week, so now that we're not spending, or we're waiting on ARPA, that begs the question, okay, are we going back to zoning regs? And if we are, are we doing these, I don't know where this got left last week, cause I had to jump on the plane, are we doing little breakout groups? That's kind of where the conversation was when I logged off, are we doing little breakout groups? Sorry, I believe David had been saying, maybe, I don't wanna misquote you, no, let's keep these all in the group, and at this point, I was walking on a plane and not hearing.
Right, right.
Well, I don't know where that ended up.
Yeah, well, well, I'm, I'm happy to continue as we were, actually, but, um, I'm not, um, inflexible about that. Go along with what's the group launch, did you want this?
So, having done the minutes recently, uh, I can tell you that what we kind of arrived at is, I think, what we arrived at was, um, people saw the merits both way, didn't necessarily make a decision, but it was pointed out, and this is probably worth mentioning, that the bylaw, that this whole process of revisiting the bylaws began, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is before I was hired, but this whole process seems to have begun in an attempt to bring specifically like ADU and a few other.
Yes.
Parts, parts, up to co- like, up to snuff with the state statutes, so some state statutes changed, suddenly ours were no longer compliant.
Specific inbound requests specifically to trails.
Yeah.
So then we kinda opened it up, I think it was, yes, ADUs and trails, and we started looking, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, and then we were like, well, maybe we should look at all of this.
Yeah, yeah, and then someone, and then I pointed out that, given that we just started a new biennial at the State House, where housing and zoning reform are two of the biggest topics, there's probably going to be some kind of new statute coming in the next, you know, six to eighteen months, that is going to render a lot of, some, at least some of our work moot, um, because the state is probably gonna change at least some, uh, zo- like zoning stuff that, yeah, that affects our bylaws, which means that, given the timeline of doing these, this ambitious bylaw review, means that we might be further extending our work another six months or so to work in all of those new statute, let's say the state changes something about like density, or, you know, uh, duplexes or whatever, we might have to go back and revise all the work that we've done to comport with that, and then wait out the cycle of warning, deliberation, getting it on a ballot, that's whole, that whole sort of stuff. So the suggestion that I heard that kind of makes the most sense to me would be maybe, take it back to basics, review the statutes to make sure that they're in line with, or the, the bylaws to make sure they're in line with state statutes, pass that as a, as a, as an amendment, like, we're gonna change the ADU stuff, we're gonna change the trail stuff, now we're in line with state statute, and then kind of kick the process back open and say, you know, well, you know, what are the sort of like dream things that we'd like to, that we'd like to change, but we're gonna need, you know, six to eight to nine months to deliberate about and, and whatnot? Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
So, yeah, but I think we have to, uh, get that, uh, printout of what we have done.
Yeah, we definitely gotta start with that.
We have to start with that.
Yeah.
So.
How do you compare what we have to the state statutes, how do you, is there, is that?
That was simple, or is that? It depend, it, largely, I mean, I talk to people, you know, um, at the, um, with the league, I talk to Kale, I, you know, probably send a few emails or listservs to the, the Vermont planners and say, well, you know, here's one, like, here's one thing, whatever. I, I, I could do a little research into it, and you guys have already started, you know, you guys are.
About a little bit, I mean, we, the, uh, the change in the, uh, ADU, uh, situation by the state, we made a few, um, requirements that, um, town, uh, bylaws have to, uh, adhere to.
Right.
You know, or be more, uh, lax.
Yeah.
In the regulations, which we can be, we can't be more restrictive. They wanna allow the ADUs, and they have certain, um, parameters that you have to allow for. So it's not a long, um, statute, you know, it's a one page, basically, and so, um, we just compared it, and we've, we've pretty much covered that issue already, although there may be some, uh, spots as we get farther along on the, uh, regulations, where, um, there's still some little thing that needs to be changed, so, we're pretty well along on it, and it's not too complicated.
Are, are you picking up on what David said, are you advocating for, and I might be completely mishearing you, saying like, okay, these are, high priority might not be the right word, but things that we can tackle that are bite sized, like ADUs, or, or, or trails, or whatever, and we're gonna review those, make sure they're good, and then try to get those through in twenty, twenty-four town meeting? As like a.
Yeah.
Package, and then there would be a second package pretty much through in like twenty, twenty-five town meeting?
Pretty much, like, and, you know, and if you think of do, if you think of aligning our bylaws to comply with state statute as the minimum, and then passing like the perfect set of zoning bylaws to like make a perfect town, I'm not saying that exists, but let's say it does, like, as the maximum, I would, I'm saying, why don't we, you know, why don't we do the minimum of just going through and seeing which parts are, are just like in violation of state statute, find, like, figuring out how to bring them into line with.
Or that we know our priorities.
That we know our priorities, or, yeah, and our big priorities, yep, do those, and we don't even have to pass them during town meeting, I believe, I believe in elec- any election, um, any townwide election works, so like, um, you know, so a primary or something like that would also work, but, um, pass those as, at, at, at the first opportunity, so prioritize those, get them done through any public hearing process that has to be done in the next couple of months, pass those at the first, put them on the ballot at the first opportunity, and then once those have been deliberated and are worn for the ballot, we can return to, okay, well, we're up to snuff with state statutes, and we've gotten the really, like, the emergency stuff out of the way, what are the, what are the wish list items? What are the stuff that we wanna, what are the stuff that we wanna take a few weeks and think about and talk about? I mean, it doesn't mean we have to throw out all the work that has done before, we could just kind of table it and come back to it, is what I'm saying, but I, I'm, I think, I guess what I'm saying is, we're, we're taking on a process that, if we're gonna really do it the way we've been really doing it, is probably gonna push us into twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, maybe, and maybe there, just, you know, given the inter- the moving parts of the state, so I'm thinking, maybe it would be, maybe we could split that up a little bit, um, and, uh, and, you know, yeah, perhaps.
Yeah, I think we should, actually.
Yeah, okay.
The, um, come, the, what we'd have to do to be in line with the state statute, that should be a separate, um, item for voting on, anyway.
Yeah, yeah, it kinda makes sense, right?
Couple of other things, you know, they should be separate items to be voted on, like, you can't put a whole bunch of stuff together.
Yeah.
What is required by the state.
Like, you could, but the problem is that it would, it would be, yeah, it would be really hard for people to get their minds around, and it would be.
It would just be wrong, actually, because it would be, in a way, uh, trying to s- strong arm people by saying that, uh, we have to do this to meet, uh, statutes.
You make a good point.
Sneaking along a few other things.
You make a good point, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
You make, that's a, that's a, that's a, I hadn't thought about that, David, but you make a very good point, yeah.
And you go offhand where the, where the, the statutes don't align.
That's what I was gonna say. I know AD, some of the byla- our bylaws and ADUs are a little more restrictive than the state, I think we can't actually cap them the way we have. There is a cap that you're allowed to put on, but I can't remember.
Yeah, I thought a little more restricted.
Yeah.
Not a lot.
Not a lot, not a lot.
And, and we were less restrictive in other ways, and suggested, or even less restrictive.
Correct.
Yeah.
Like, we allow duplexes anywhere, a single family home is allowed, and, um, that's not, that's not required by state statute, but it is one of the things that's being debated in this housing bill, so, you know, so, yeah.
duplex is very similar, it's just a very small difference between a duplex and a, uh, ADU.
Yeah, one septic system, one driveway, you know, it's not a whole lot different, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a, um, procedural process, I think.
Yeah, which is why it's so appealing for.
Yeah, the ADU, you don't have to, I don't know, but you can have a, uh, a conditional, um, um, review for a duplex, I think.
I think, do we?
Maybe not, maybe I'm wrong.
Duplexes we allow anywhere, with some places you have to do a site plan review, yeah, but no, but you're, you're, you're correct, David, like, the, it would be, um, we, we, we do, um, you're, you're right, you're right to point out that it would be probably unfair from a democracy standpoint to put mandatory stuff at, on the same question, ballot question as discretionary stuff. So, here's a suggestion, I could, uh, while I'm talking with Kale about this other stuff, I could talk with Kale, I could talk with our attorney, um, about what we would have to do to bring our, like, all the areas where our bylaws are deficient, I could bring up a list of those, and we could start working on a list of those and other small, other like high priority ones, and maybe try to make that, like, with the goal of working towards like holding public hearings and getting that formal process of bylaw amendments started.
So, yeah, you're, um, getting this, uh, as a printout thing, you could, uh, break that out and do just a printout on the ADU stuff that we've done.
Yeah, yeah.
Just have that before us, and then, um, and other items, too, the trail stuff, maybe.
ADUs and trails, definitely that would be reformed, and then, I'm not aware of anything else that.
I mean, those are areas we've done.
And you've already done the work.
Just have to review.
Yeah, right, it's just about putting it on the same page, and then adding, maybe I guess, anything else that's super high priority.
And how do we get to that, that's what I'm trying to understand for myself, how do we get to the list of what we're supposed to be working on, that's super high priority?
Well, yeah.
You talking to other planners or something?
I've talked to other planners, um, and when I say super high priority, I mean, that's kind of up to you guys about what you, or, or, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, like, areas where we think we could be deficient and we should look at.
Um, that's something that I could, yeah, I think that's, I, that, that is, there's no, there's no central authority, like, there's no place I can log on and like, you know, upload a copy of our PD, of our regulations, and someone thinks, checks it for me and says, here's where it's good and here's where it's not. But yeah, some con- some conversations with Kale, with other planners, and I think we could probably get an answer to that pretty quickly, so maybe.
Some of it, Brian was just as we read it through, we said, you know, does it really make sense, is this just nonsense, you know?
Agreed.
So that's part of a thing, you know, actually, we get it before us and see, how does this work out, anyway, and.
Yeah.
Could this be here?
Yeah.
So it really isn't a, um, you know, a master list, or, you know.
Right, no.
So are you saying that to do for next meeting is that we, I don't know if this is possible for next meeting, but the next time this comes up, that we like, just to pick ADUs and trails, do we, do we get the changes that have been made to that master for ADUs and trails, and bring those back, review them, and then decide what we wanna do next, please?
If we're not, if.
I'm just trying to think of the agendas, is that our to do item, our to do?
Continue along where we, um, you know, where we ended.
Yeah.
Six months ago, or where.
I mean, if we're not doing anything bes- if we're not doing anything besides kind of like.
I mean, our agenda's wide open.
Yeah, if we're not, if we're only trying to get the bylaw stuff going again, then I could devote the next two weeks to, um, trying, to trying to identify any other areas besides ADUs and trails where our regulations are deficient, and bring that forward, and then, yeah.
I think there were some things in, in the bylaws that were minimal, that we looked at, that we decided to drop or change the wording on.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, it'd be good to review all of that, I think, from the beginning, you know, not spend a ton of time on it, but just start from the beginning.
Yeah.
Get back to where we left off, and then we could proceed from there, maybe.
Yeah.
But, I don't, I don't, I don't remember half the stuff we talked about, actually, so.
Sammy?
Um, I think we talked, uh, and, and made some changes to stream crossings, right? Not only.
As part of trails, you did, yeah.
As trails, but also just thinking about that whole area and redoing some figures that helped to clarify, um, uh, stream bank width and various things, I think Kale did that presentation, and then brought that information together, so that would be important to include, and the other one that I think we, we don't want to push forward is the, um, I think we did some, some work on height restrictions, so that we could allow when, you know, uh, residential wind, um, to be installed, and I don't remember how that got left, but I think we, we did look at that, so, um, I think that's an important one to include.
So, okay, so maybe you're, I'm seeing, maybe your to do for the next two weeks, just for the planning commission, is to try to get that master file, and I'm happy to come in and sit with you.
Yeah.
Try to get that master file, um, in whatever form we want, whatever form you want it for the next meeting.
Yeah.
And then we pick back up, and we can review ADUs, review trails, what everyone's talking about, but it seems like step one is getting that master file where it needs to be.
Yeah, okay, okay, so that would be the most useful for you guys.
One of our purposes in going through the, uh, somebody more, from beginning to end, was to try to take care of some of the questions that, um, were coming up in the development review board, and how do we do this, you know, it, because the, uh, regulations are, um, not clear, or they're not helpful in this particular situation, so it was problems that cropped up in the development review board that we were trying to correct, also.
Yeah.
That was one of the big things, actually, that we were working on.
Yeah.
Yep.
Although it wasn't really, we didn't really get very much, uh, in the way of clear pointers from the development review board.
We got that list.
They have a big list.
Yeah, all there, there are many, 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 many suggested changes floating around out there, and so for next time, I'll do my best to try to get them into one file, um, at least the ones that have come out of this commission.
Yeah.
And maybe we can talk about the DRD stuff later on, but, yeah, I can, I could do that, for sure, I could, I could try to, I could, I could, that's a, that's a, it's gotta happen, so let's do it, yeah.
So here's my question.
Make that as you are in the sessions with the development review board, that you're observing, and where are the problems?
Oh, yeah, I've, I've, I've seen a few, yeah, yeah.
So you can help find those on the way, as we, as we go?
Uh, yeah, I, I'll do my best, I mean, you know, Charlie's definitely the person to, to, to give the most nuanced opinion.
And we have his list, too.
The list, yeah.
I guess my question for the group is, so if, if, just for next guidance, and so we're doing what people want to do. So do we want to take like, making up numbers, an hour of. Meetings to do zoning regs and then, so we're not just doing zoning regs, take. A half hour, twenty-five minutes or whatever and do. Housing and then do, talk about zoning map. So we're mixing it up a little bit. It's not just all zoning regs for ninety minutes every meeting because that's own. And maybe to just to pick the first one, maybe we could either talk about zoning map or housing since those are two of the big things that came up today. So next week would be an hour zoning regs. Twenty-five minutes zoning map or housing or whatever.
I think it's too soon for the zoning map actually.
I think you're right about that.
Yeah, so maybe housing. Twenty-five minutes on housing or, or another topic. Yeah, just to brainstorm ideas on housing.
I think that would be good then. I'll make progress on my, my ADU and short term rental.
It sort of ties in with the ADU stuff.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, yeah. They are not unrelated. Yeah.
Is that good with you?
Yeah, totally.
Okay, so it'll be mostly zoning regs, two thirds zoning regs, one third housing.
Cool. It's going to be spreadsheet time for me. Yeah.
Well, and please keep us in the loop as to what's realistic. Obviously.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that. You know. You know, actually. Now that if we're going to do the, if we're going to kind of have that split of categories instead of housing necessarily. Maybe we could save time next week for, I can give an update because I just had a conversation, a great conversation with. Linda, who's my counterpart over in Jericho, and we brought up a number of different things and I could update you on that conversation.
Oh, that'd be great.
Perfect, yeah.
I didn't add it.
I just didn't want to do zoning regs for ninety minutes because I think that's, everyone would quit.
That sounds right.
It'd be you and I and eight vacancies. And David.
Go back to the, the state versus town regulations. So, so is there a concerted effort or is it going to be a concerted effort to try to align the state and town?
I mean.
Regulations in, in general on, on all, on all the categories.
I think.
To development.
I mean, here or just in.
Just in, just in general, I used to do, you could come back with our regional town thinkers and where that, where it's trying to be pushed toward.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
What is the question? I'm sorry, what was that?
No, just trying to get a better understanding of what, what, what the, the state's trying to do with the towns and trying to align the, the state.
I think that's way down the road and it's, it's, it's almost inviting a rebellion for the state to come in and say, all right, towns.
Yeah.
We want you to do this.
Yeah.
We're going to make you do this.
I guess more on project basis. That's already happened with Act two fifty, you know, the project of a certain size and the. You have to go through the state permitting, which has all their criteria, right, which kind of mirrors the town, but it's. And it's kind of, some's the same, some, some is, is the same as a town, some's different and there's overlap and there's discrepancies.
It's complicated is the answer. Cause so, so for something like two fifty, that's sort of interlocked with our global zoning regulations. Like it. It, it, it's there, it would be there even if we, if like Act two fifty still applies in Cambridge, for instance, which has no zoning code or zoning bylaws. I think, but to your answer about like what are, what should we be doing as the, you know, the body, you know, in charge of the zoning regulations in the town? I mean, it's kind of up to us, like, you know, and it's up to our capacity. So in a town with, with very little capacity, let's say they have no zoning administrator. They just have a planning commission or something like that. And maybe that also does DRV cases. Then, you know, then it's, a lot of those towns have bylaws in the books that are completely contradictory of state statute. It's just that if they tried to enforce it, someone could take them to court and get, and, and have that action that they're trying to take be rendered null and void. That's the only difference. They can have whatever law they want on, on the books, they can, they can pass whatever law they want, but it doesn't mean that it's enforceable. So what we'd be doing in like changing our ADU language to comply with state statute is just making our language. As restrictive as or less restrictive than the state so that if, basically to make my job easier. So that I would, so that like, and to make other, and to make applicants as well. I'm just thinking selfishly, like. It makes it easier for someone who's maybe wanted to do a project because then they have to look at one, they just look at our regulations and they can know. These things are in line with the state statutes and I don't have to know in my head that like ninety percent of this is, I have to follow ninety percent of this, but I can ignore the parts on ADUs or whatever. Because the state has its like, you, you know, you know what I'm saying? So it's really, it's almost a customer service kind of thing. It's like, it's a matter of good governance, just to kind of like. To, to do, to, to, you know, take that on and, and eventually, yes, if we kind of never, I guess if we never. Updated our bylaws, eventually someone might sue us and say, you have to update these things because they're wildly out of, out of. Compliance with state statutes and it's impossible to know what, what is actually allowed in Underhill.
Do you think there might be other digits, person or two in Underhill?
Who you're talking about. So, so it's really, it's not like, it's not like the state is going to come chasing us if we don't update our bylaws. And it's not like, you know, there's going to be some drastic thing if we don't do it, but it's just a matter of.
Inviting a train wreck.
It's inviting a train wreck and it's making life harder on the, on the daily for anyone who has to deal with the bylaws, myself, you know, included. So it's just good practice to kind of update them and make sure that everyone knows what's going on.
Do you think the state will just, no, no, I'm just pointing curiosity.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this is where Tim was going or not. Do you think the state is going to just incrementally? Continue to pass statutes, basically, not like one fell swoop, like screw you towns, but just incrementally continue to pass things where. You open up ADUs a little bit more, then you say maybe it's, maybe it's harder to do single family zoning unless it's this or that. Like do you, is that what you see in the planning world?
Right now I see.
I mean, that's a smart thing to do is, you know, run this little thing, basically.
One bite at a time.
Yeah, the housing bill I'm talking about is kind of known as the omnibus housing bill. It's sponsored by Seth Bonharts. Bonharts, Von Gar, I can't remember, Von Gar's.
I wouldn't know who you were talking about anyways.
Yeah, Seth something or other. But, but the point is, I believe he's from Benton or Brownborough, but anyway, it's. The point is basically it's an omnibus housing bill with a bunch of small incremental steps in it. They kind of add up to a larger reform of, of. Laws applying to housing and some of which apply to zoning. But no, I don't see them deploying in California and I hope they don't because that would, because I mean, that's. It's a huge shakeup and it would be, it has massive implications for, for, you know, the most active part of government in Vermont, which is the towns and cities. So it would, so I don't think that, and knowing that, and everyone knows that, so I know, I don't think there's going to be some big state preemption where the state comes in and like erases zoning codes. But I do think that that is sort of the implied threat, to be honest, if, if there isn't, if, if towns and cities aren't willing to start. Taking some action on their own and to work with the state on larger stuff that requires cooperation. If that, if there's a lot of pushback on that. You know, they have two years in the, in Montpelier to work with, with this budget cycle. So I think, I think the, the sense that I'm getting is. People want to play nice this first year and, and maybe even pass an omnibus housing bill if at all possible. And, but I think that the implied. Sort of threat or coercion is that if people can't play nice, if we can't cooperate and we can't get something passed this year or something. Big on the horizon for next year, then it might be a little bit more punitive and people might just take the opportunity to, you know. To just parcel out a part of that big compromise housing bill and just send it right through. Something that says, for instance. No more single family zoning in the state of Vermont. Or if you have like municipal wastewater, you have to allow up to, you know, four, four unit. Things within, where any area is serviced by that wastewater. Or, you know, if you are failing to. Achieve like housing growth over a certain percentage year over year, then you have to institute these number of zoning reforms. You don't get a choice about it.
What's crazy is they need to do something about wastewater, then for small.
So the good news is, I think that, I think that in this sort of spirit of cooperation and compromise that we're currently enjoying, I do think that. That that is much more interest in trying to incentivize rather than regulate. And I appreciate that. And I think that one of those, the big things that we can look forward to. Is much more funding and, and staff support for wastewater and municipal water and.
It's silly to expect a like volunteer planning commission to get that over and on.
It's really hard. It's really hard. And that's actually a little, little sneak preview. That's what we'll be talking about in my update from talking with Linda.
I figured, we knew, I always thought you were burying the, the punchline there.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. So that we got that to look forward to. But, yeah, anyway, that's, that's, that's kind of my take. From having observed what's going on in Montpelier is I think everyone wants to play nice for now and it will, and that attitude. If that attitude can be turned into legislation, then that, I think that that will probably. Then we will be able to continue that. But if they can't get legislation passed or if something gets vetoed, then people might be more interested in playing hardball. So, yeah. And, you know, with a super majority of, you know, one and a half parties, you know, hardball is, is, it can, can be played. So.
And the only thought I had is just like, as trails being an example, and the, the, the town trails policy is somewhat lax and, and local and common essential. Where if you went with the state policy, you'd be getting into a lot more can of worms of wildlife habitat.
Yeah, yeah.
And wildlife corridors and wetlands and.
Yeah.
Stream crossings and archaeology.
Yeah, exactly.
Be careful what you.
Exactly.
I only cars.
Yeah, which is good. Which is why it's good for us to get out ahead and kind of say like, listen, you know, here's our locals, our local side of things. We checked. It's compliant with state statute. So we stick to this and you're good to go.
Right.
You know, and I'd love to have that for, you know, all these areas that people have legitimate zoning questions on. Like that's, that's the goal is to. Just have answers for everyone who's got a question. So, yeah. So next time we talk about updates from the Jericho.
Your Jericho and then zoning.
And then zoning bylaws, back to zoning bylaws.
Cool. Great, everyone. Anything else? Is there anyone here who would like to make a motion adjourned?
Yeah.
Roy, all in favor? Thank you, everyone. Bye, Sandy.
Bye, Sandy.
Bye, Sandy.